Hello. Excuse me. We are back and we will continue 62-15, Tana Falmouth, 154 Blacksmith Shop Road. Attorney Toulton.
I think, have we read it in? It's a continuation.
Yes.
We read it in, but we did not hear testimony.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks, I wasn't sure about that either. Good evening and thank you very much. This is the first public hearing where testimony will be taken on the town's special permit application. And we're very happy to be engaging in this process and at long last. And I think at the very beginning of the meeting tonight, the chair read into the record, or spoke into the record essentially the responsibilities of the zoning board of appeal. And we would ask you, in looking at our special permit application, to keep an open mind, to listen carefully to the testimony, to weigh the testimony by the town's experts in particular, all of whom are extremely well qualified and who have studied this issue for years. We would encourage you to rely on the information that is presented at the public hearing and not on whatever material is extraneous to the public hearing.
Yeah.
And to apply the criteria set out in the zoning bylaw dispassionately and objectively. And again, we, the town believes that this is a good project. We've had five years of data now on wind one and three-plus years of data on wind two to evaluate it. The town intends to present several experts tonight. We're going to start with Steve Wea from Weston and Sampson, who's going to take us through the engineering aspects of the project. We will have Chris Menj from HMMH presenting acoustics analysis and a thorough acoustics analysis. And we're hoping actually that we'll be able to schedule our expert on the same night, that the butters schedule their expert on acoustics that would seem to make the most sense. And we're also going to hear from, at some point, Dr. Robert McConney, who's a well-known doctor and a public health specialist, who will talk and who has done extensive research on the impact of wind turbines on health, who will address the issue of health impacts. So without further elaboration, I'm going to turn the program over to Steve Wea.
Thanks Diane. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name for the record is Steve Wea. I'm a project manager and a renewable energy team leader with the firm Weston and Sampson, Engineers, Inc. I usually don't like to admit anything in front of a bunch of lawyers, but I'm guilty of being fairly plain spoken. So I'm going to go through my slide presentation, hopefully without boring any of you. Just by way of background, Weston and Sampson is a 115-year-old engineering firm. Our business is helping cities and towns, largely, most of our clients are cities or towns, most of them are in Massachusetts. We had a client base of 200 cities and towns or public entities last year, and it's to build municipal infrastructure. And so we've been involved with renewable energy projects for as long as I've been employed at Weston and Sampson, which is just a little over eight years. And this is one of the first jobs that I was assigned, so I've been involved with it a lot. And I know a lot technically about the project, and I'm here to tell you what I can, but for you to ask me questions, because I know there's a lot of information out there. There's a lot of misinformation, there's a lot of things that people think they know, and information that I've heard, and shake my head yes or no, or sort of, you know. But I'm here to give you a presentation that I think is thoughtful. It's for a special permit. My job is to do this in front of other town boards, committees, concom. And we've permitted, you know, I think 11.4 megawatts of projects that are wind-related in the state of Massachusetts. There are probably 24 feasibility studies that we've done as a company, so we're familiar with what's in and what's not in a feasibility study. Scopes and the information that's contained often changes based on time and budget constraints, and so I hope to go through a little bit of that with you. Some of the people that I know and I've worked here with for a long time, Heather Harper for one, knows that I have long been an advocate, so if there's any mistake, I'm on the side of the wind turbine project here in Falmouth. I'm here to advocate on the merits of that project. I think it's a good project, I think it is well-sighted. It's, there's a lot of documentation that was done long before I got started with this project, but I hope to go through some of that with you. And so officially, this is our ask for a special permit at the Falmouth wastewater treatment facility at 154 Black Shop Smith Road. It's a parcel of land that if you add up all of the town holdings that are contiguous, is about 314 acres. Just some of the facts and figures about, this is a picture of wind one, obviously after it was constructed. We do have the benefit of five years of hindsight now to look at what we're going to say tonight. But a wind turbine of this size is capable of producing 3,500 megawatt hours of electricity per year. That's 3.5 million kilowatt hours. That's the equivalent, if you go to the EPA's website for greenhouse gas equivalents calculator, it's 2,400 tons of carbon that you won't put into the atmosphere. It takes 508 cars off the road. It's equivalent to 5.7 million miles driven by a car each year. It's 271,000 gallons of gasoline per year, and the equivalent of 2.5 million pounds of coal per year that would otherwise be burned in a fossil fuel plant to produce the same amount of clean energy. And it's capable of producing 332 homes per year equivalent of electricity, based on their metric, 1,200 kilowatt hours or so per month. So just some of the statistics and reasons why this was built. Public policy and setting, again, there's a long timeframe, 2002 to 2015. Not all projects are done for financial reasons, but most of them are. There are some clients, I've done a feasibility study for a monastery in Spencer, Mass., where it wasn't just about the dollars that they could have made with that turbine, but it had to do with the greenhouse gas. That was important to them. Ultimately, it wasn't a good site, so of the 24 feasibility studies that I've been involved with, not all of them have been built, even though I would have clearly, would have loved to participate and recommend that they build it. If it didn't make sense for a lot of good reasons, then it didn't get constructed. But at this site, there are a lot of good reasons compelling to build it. And so it's part of the town's policy to generate clean renewable energy, and this project has a long history, that again, I only came into the picture in 2000, late 2007 to start looking at it. But it was part of the Falmouth Energy Plan, developed in 2003, they're part of the Climate Protection Plan. The 2005 feasibility study, again, a feasibility study is nothing more than a steering document. It didn't necessarily address everything, but it was a broad-brush attempt to try and paint some of the salient points that people had to know about if they were going to go down the road of building a wind turbine. And so it necessitated internally within the town, the forming of a team, because one thing that I've learned over the years is, it takes a lot of perseverance to build a project like this. And you need to have people who are committed and that will spend the time, and it included the engineering department, who was the first to call us, because we're a vendor on their environmental and engineering services library, and they said, "We need help building this? Let me call Weston and Sampson." And so the engineering department, George Kalis, who was the town engineer at the time, is the one that first contacted us. But the planning department was involved, the wastewater treatment superintendent, Jerry Potamus is here, it's his facility, he's mandated to run and treat sewage for the town. And so again, it goes back to a permit process, again, which I'm going to touch on later, but that treatment facility was constructed without a special permit. This is an important structure to that facility. And it had the support of the town manager, and certainly the assistant town manager at the time. We talk about enabling enactments. Chapter 240 was a bylaw that the town of Falmouth happened to have on the books that regulated the construction of wind turbines. You're one of a few towns that happened to have one at this time, and it's a rather short one, I included a copy of it. It's less than a page of text that says what someone who was going to apply for a permit needs to look at. And it was adopted in 1981. So again, just, there's a number of slides that are somewhat repetitive in terms of just trying to establish the timeline, that again, this turbine didn't just appear overnight, it was through many years of effort. And so I'll try and skip some of it, but these background technical reports were everything that I had available to me when George Kalis called me one day. And I pulled these down off of the MTC's website at the time, and that's all of the studies that had gone on. It gave me the background that I needed to understand what they were trying to do. In 2007, the chapter 200, the Acts of 2007, was state law that was passed by the general court. And if you read it, it says that the town shall be authorized to build wind turbines, with an S plural at the end of it, at the town's wastewater treatment facility on Blacksmith Shop Road. And this language that was adopted in 2007 was taken almost verbatim and baked into the Governor Deval Patrick's, what many would call the landmark legislation of the Green Communities Act. And when that act was passed in 2008, that was 100 pages of legislation that did all sorts of good things for the Commonwealth in terms of building renewable energy projects, wind included and solar. And before that act was passed, you couldn't build a wind turbine larger than 60 KW and be eligible for net metering credits. And so this allowed a generator up to two megawatts to be built and be eligible to receive net metering credits. Some of the early things that were done in preparation was to get a fatal flaw analysis, oftentimes a look at what permits are required. If you're near an airfield in an airspace, you're going to need FAA approval to build any structure over 200 feet, period. And the way that FAA looks at things is a little bit with blinders on. They want very specifically for you to tell them exactly where in space, with a latitude, a longitude, a ground elevation, and how tall is your structure. You tell us that, and we'll tell you if there's going to be an obstruction analysis with our flight plans and airmen that use the airfield that are nearby. So at the time, it wasn't exactly clear what turbine would be built, so the exact height of the structure wasn't known, but they knew about how big it was. And I think that says that it's probably in the 400-foot range, is what they were anticipating being built. And they got a determination as far back as 2006, saying that there's not going to be any adverse effect. We learned later that there was some issues that we had to deal with. Similarly, again, as an engineering consultant, we try and advise our clients to go and apply for anything that could potentially be a stumbling block. So natural resources and historical, cultural resources, in terms of the Mass Historic Commission, they have some say on the appropriateness of a structure like this in an area where pilgrims were in 1600s. And so it matters to them whether or not this is suitable for that. And they said, "There's not going to be an adverse effect on cultural and historical resources." And that was as early as 2007. Again, I touched on this, the chapter 200 laws of 2007. Again, not that many people read it very closely, but if you look at the language in this legislation that was passed specifically for the town of Falmouth, it's almost verbatim in the Green Communities Act. And I think that's kind of neat personally. So again, late 2007, the town hires us to help them develop a plan and a basis of design. So the town engineer said, "Steve, I want you to craft an invitation for bid, and we have to follow procurement laws, but I want you to base it generally on something that's one and a half to two megawatts." And there were only five megawatts worth of wind power that were installed in the state when we started down this road. And so he says, "I know that there was one that was built sort of the same size that I want, and it's in Jiminy Peak Ski Resort, and that's a GE 1.5, so let's just loosely base it around that, because that's a turbine that we want." We couldn't tell the bidding community, because of procurement laws, which manufacturer they had to use. That would be unfair to the different manufacturers who are out there. We could write a performance spec, which is what we did. We told them how big, how big of a generator, and generally what the performance characteristics should be. But this was a project that was an example that you could see and go look at, and it was real, and so people understood generally what it would take to build it. It's at a ski resort where people ski on the slopes, you know, anytime that the ski conditions permit, and I think that they've been running successfully without any incidents, whether or not there's ice throw, for example. And so it's important to look at that in this context. The project team, again, Weston and Sampson. Later, we added Harris, Miller, Miller and Hanson to do an acoustic study, and why? And it was because of the complaints. Is there a requirement that we do an acoustic study before? No. Why would you do one if you didn't anticipate that you were going to violate the state standards? And so a study wasn't done. And I would tell you that most of the feasibility studies that we have done haven't included an actual acoustical study, where we sent an acoustical engineer out in the field with a microphone and recorded for some period of time to see what background noises are. But we added them. Bill Vaschan is a consultant. Bill's been in the wind turbine industry as long as wind turbines have been built. He's been consulting mechanical engineer. He knows a thing or two about wind turbines. And we had him as an advisor to help craft what the performance specs wanted to say so that we got the right turbine for Falmouth. Sustainable Energy Advantage had done some economics, and there was a legal consultant. And I have to admit, I never worked with the lawyers. I generally don't, so I was a little intimidated to come here with all these lawyers. The collaborators, first of all DNC, the construction. LUMAS built the second one, they bid on the first one, they were rejected initially, I'll go through some of that. But the collaborators with Mass Technology Collaborative, the MTC at the time, it's now called the Mass CEC. KEMA, of course, their study has been widely talked about. The Cape Light Compact, because they bought Rex, so there's an important revenue stream that makes these projects viable financially, not only technically. The DEP's been involved. The second project did include ARA funding, but all of these town engineers, selectmen, energy committee, the manager's office, they were all involved with the project, and heavily. They knew a lot about what they wanted to do, but they clearly needed technical help to try and get the project built. So again, procurement laws dictate that the town couldn't dictate, but they had to put it out to bid. Our chief concern was that you don't want an inexperienced contractor, or an unproven manufacturing of the turbine. We issued a bid in May of 2008, and the bids came in 4.2 to 5.3 million dollars. And so, you know, money is important, but this is the breakdown of the bids, LUMAS Construction. So we asked, though, in the performance spec, not only for the machine itself, in terms of its reliability, its service factor, in terms of the uptime, how often is it available? If the wind is blowing, can it make energy? Is it going to be down for maintenance and repair? These are numbers that are important when you're trying to recover money from the energy generation. DNC Construction, at 4.3, included a Vestas 1.65. And yes, this is one of the turbines that was originally bought by the MTC, originally destined for Orleans, and Orleans backed out of the deal at the last minute. And so if you talk to the folks that bought those turbines, they literally felt like they were left at the altar with these turbines. They had a project that was going to be built, but it was under a private ownership model, where the town of Orleans really was only going to get a benefit after the developer took what was his piece of the pie, because no one's going to frankly come in and build this for you for nothing. While they love the carbon goals, if there's not a monetary incentive for them to do it, they're not going to do it. And the gap between what the town was going to get and the developer was too great, and I think that the town of Orleans backed out. So the Mass Technology Collaborative had these turbines, and they were looking to find a home. One of the first things that they did was they contacted the central register and got the plan holders list. And then they said, "Look, if you're looking to bid this job, we have a turbine that you could buy." And DNC did that. The other bidders had some experience. Eos Ventures was a joint venture firm that was formed, they're the ownership stakes in Jiminy Peak. They bid this job. And you can see the range of the difference in cost, and so cost is a consideration, and the machine is a consideration. We also had a stipulation that if you're going to bid this job, show us that you've done at least one turbine of comparable size. And LUMAS Construction, at the time, hadn't built one. They had contracts to do five of them, but they hadn't actually built one, so they hadn't gone through that process that we felt was important from an experience standpoint. And DNC had. They'd actually been the contractor that was hired by Hull to build wind, their Hull Two that they called it, and that's the 1.8 megawatt on top of their closed landfill. It's the machine that's comparable to the one that you have. It's slightly larger in terms of nameplate generation, but the turbine, for all practical purposes, is the same size. These other people that were on here, they, these are players in a market that I don't think that they had a lot of experience with, and their bids, the numbers, from my perspective, who looks at a lot of public bids on behalf of owners, it looks like a guarded number. They felt that there's a lot of risk in there. AAER, by the way, is a turbine. We didn't take lightly the fact that we had to reject LUMAS's bid. And so aside from the fact that they were inexperienced, we also had some concerns about the turbine itself. And this was a new manufacturer. The guys that started this were former Vestas guys, and they were building these up in Canada, and they had a great business model. They were going to try and sell them cheaper than Vestas, and service them, and be successful businessmen. But they hadn't done the requisite number of turbines that we were looking for, so that we knew that we could get parts and service, and that these machines would be kept up and running in a serviceable manner. We visited their factory, and we walked away from there shaking our head going, "I just don't think that these guys are going to be in it for the long haul." So we rejected that bid. We went to the attorney general's office, Frank Duffy and I had to go down there and defend it, and we prevailed on behalf of the town, because it was in the town's best Vestas, again, there's a few slides here, you know, for what you may or may not know, from my perspective, Vestas is a wonderful machine. You should be happy that you have a high-quality machine like this, operating and serviceable. They've been around since 1979. They're always at the top five leader of installed capacity. The V82 is widely used, there's tens of thousands of them in North America. It's a proven design, and it's a workhorse of their fleet. I've visited with their service manager up in Laoville, upstate New York, where they were based, where the service technicians actually come and service New England, and they have a wind farm of 300 or 400 of these machines that are running all the time. And the technicians, they love the machine, because they're reliable, they're simple, and they're proven, and their uptime is tremendous, and their energy output is tremendous. And so, not lost, it's identical to the existing Notice turbine. They bought the other twin turbine that was originally bound for Orleans. They bought the other twin turbine that was originally bound for Orleans. And they obtained and have a special permit from the Falmouth ZBA to operate it, and they've been running 24/7, 365 for the last five years. And if you ever want to know what your turbine should be doing, just ask them how much they've produced, and you should be producing about the same amount of energy. What's good about it? Look at their power curve. Their certified power curve looks just like any other turbine of this size and class. Their certified sound curve, I have included in your packet, in addition to just these slides, something that you should see. And that's the IEC certification process. And so Vestas, as a manufacturer, goes before IEC the same way that someone who makes a toaster is going to go before the underwriter's laboratory or good housekeeping seal of approval and get their design certified by these people. Because when you see that, you should feel comfortable that they did it right. And so their certified sound curve is something that we looked at, and it's well documented. It's highly reliable. This is their power curve, incidentally, which you can see. It doesn't produce anything until the wind is blowing at least three and a half meters per second. And if you multiply that by 2.1, you'll get miles per hour. Wind turbines were largely developed in Europe, so we have to suffer through the metric system. And so you get used to it. But that's why you always see it, incidentally, in those units. And again, it's how fast will this turbine get up to its rated capacity? And you see the flat line up around 10 to 12 meters per second? That's where the machine at that wind speed should be producing 1.65 megawatts of electricity. And for every hour, that's 1,650 kilowatt hours of electricity that it should produce over an hour. So the warranted sound power curve, again, when, where there was a complaint about the sound, there was immediate concern that, is there something wrong with this turbine? We better go check it out. And when we notified Vestas, they sent their lead design engineer for this machine from Portland, Oregon, in the United States, their corporate headquarters is there. And he said, what's wrong with my baby? I'm going to come down and look at this thing. There's got to be something wrong with it. And there wasn't anything wrong with it. There was some minor issues that they identified during the shakedown and the mechanical completion, which they quickly cleared up. And we had done an informal test of the sound level that they had certified to make sure that this machine was no louder than we expected it to be. And part of that was done during the sound study that we had done with Chris Senni's acoustical engineers, noise control engineers, who are great, fine acoustical engineers. There's many of them. I've used four in the last eight years, and they all do tremendously good work, tremendously consistent work. And they all say about the same thing. They look at what you did, yeah, it looks about right. And there was no argument about the sound data that was collected during the sound study for this. There was some interesting descriptions about amplitude modulation, and that's a nifty way to describe the sound that it makes. Because sound isn't from a point source in a wind turbine. And you sort of have to realize that when you read the IEC standard, is that sound emanates from both the blades cutting through the air and the mechanical parts inside the nacelle. And so they, they, meaning IEC, says, I want all of you manufacturers that want my certification to measure your sound the same way so that everybody knows what they're getting when they buy this machine. And it involves placing a microphone on the ground a certain distance away while measuring wind speed, both at hub height and at 10 meters above ground. And we tried to simulate that as best that we could while we were collecting all of these other sound measurements. And we were satisfied that this machine was producing either at or below what Vestas had certified it to be. This is just a document that was prepared shortly after the wind turbine was commissioned, and it had some vital stats about the machine. For me personally, like, I'm very proud of these projects, you know? My father has come to visit me in Massachusetts once from Maryland where he lives. And when he said, he said, Steve, you're a geologist. What do you do? Like, what do you do for a living, you know? And so I brought him here to Falmouth because this is how proud I am of this. I brought him to the ceremony where they cut the ribbon, and Congressman Della Hunt spoke in this room. And that's probably about the last time that I've been down here, you know? But I've been following your project, and I've been interested in it. And so I was happy to come here tonight. Someone tried to give me tickets to the Patriots game tonight. And I said, no, you know, I did without thinking it. And they wanted to give me four tickets. And when I told my wife last night, she goes, well, why didn't you take them and give them to us? You know, we would have gone. But I didn't think twice about coming here because this is much more important to me. Anyway, it's important to note, and if I lose my voice, I apologize. It just means that I'll hurry and get through this quicker. Wind turbines were difficult to obtain. If I was an engineer calling around to tell the town how much this project should cost them, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't call different manufacturers and different vendors and say, hey, how much is a turbine? And how long would it take me to get one? And they laughed at me. They said, you can't buy just one. You know, you've got to buy minimum orders here, 20 megawatts, click. Minimum orders here are 50 megawatts. I don't think so, you know, 100 megawatts. Those were common. Those are the orders that they were taking because the bandwidth of these manufacturers were to produce a certain number of turbines that could roll off their assembly lines in any one year. And they were already committed to guys that were willing to pay, you know, millions and millions of dollars for a lot of them because they were building a wind farm somewhere in the world. So there's a long lead time in the original contract documents, and that's for a reason because we knew that it would be hard to get. So part of my job, again, just covering bases, is to find out, okay, what other permits do I need? Do I need a special permit, site plan approval, or something like that? And so I filled out the town's one-page application, and I sent it to George. And George said, ah, let me think about this. And he went around to his departments, and they determined that this was municipal use. You don't need a special permit, just like they didn't need one when they built the wastewater treatment facility at this site. So we had a memo. We put a check mark on it. Check, okay, that box is covered. So we come before you, though, to ask for you to give us a special permit now because the courts have deemed that it's appropriate and you should. So we look at things very simply, and there are five items here that they asked us to look at. Setbacks, neighborhood impacts, the wires that you have a use permit and that it's protected from unlawful access. So these slides are designed to tell you that the setbacks are the fall zone plus 10 feet is what is required. And now that we know how tall this wind turbine is, because it's not a GE 1.5 that's 385 feet tall, it's a Vestas 1.65 that's 397 feet tall. Plus 10 says that we need 407 feet as a required zoning setback. The existing setback is 1,140 feet to the parcel property line. So if I'm your wind turbine and I fall, I'm not going to hit your neighbor's property and cause damage unnecessarily. And this is a picture of where wind one is on that 314-acre parcel. I slid this in, this is farther in your presentation, but it made better sense to show all three Vestas turbines. And the two blue ones are the town's, and of course, the Notice Turbine over there, which, again, went through the same process. The machine and all of the engineering design and aspects of that are identical to this because it's the same make and model. So evaluation of neighborhood impacts. This is where it gets, is it a little fuzzy? What's a neighborhood impact? But engineering design, is it adequate to protect the public from risk of harm, from mechanical failure, ice throw and noise? At the time, in the 80s, television and radio interference couldn't be affected either because they didn't have cable. And sometimes someone's TV might need to be adjusted because a structure in the way could cause interference with that. So it shouldn't affect that. We also look at wind turbines in terms of microwave tower, cell-to-cell tower. There are some communications where cellular towers can easily bend around objects and structures where microwave beams are focused like a laser. And if you're in between sending and receiving microwave beam with a turbine right in the middle of it, you're going to have problems with that. But that's not the case here. The town's bylaw says something to the effect that sound levels from a windmill below 40 decibels at a property line are defined as acceptable, a presumptive acceptable. In other words, if it's that or less, then there's no argument, there's no reason to do any sound testing. I would have argued, not to bother with the expert witnesses and drag this out anymore, I'd ask you for approval tonight, but I know that's not what you want to hear, and so I'm not going to do that. They're going to come in and they're going to tell you things, you know, that are very detailed. Ice throw, is there a risk or harm from ice throw? Certainly, there's a potential. You have anything can form ice and snow when there's ice and snow in the atmosphere. It can form on your roof or your building and slide off and hit you on the head. So why wouldn't it do it from a wind turbine? And couldn't it be thrown a big distance from this wind turbine? So the answer is, yeah, it could, but probably not. Well, what do you mean probably, Steve? What do you mean by that? So I mean by that, that the likelihood of ice being thrown a significant distance is about one in a million if you move the decimal to the right spot, you know? And I'm saying, it's not likely that anyone in the town of Falmouth is going to be struck by a piece of falling ice from this turbine. It happens, if ice forms on it, it's not windy, it's going to form on the blades, there's a lot of different ways that you could do it. You could probably study it to death, but you don't need to. And I think the last five years of service and operation is enough testament to that. This is a figure that I like just because it's very clear. It kind of shows how sound attenuates with distance as you move away from a wind turbine. Again, it's not a point source right at the hub, but it's shown this way graphically to give you an idea of what it sounds like. And it's doubtful that anyone in this room hasn't driven by and sat and listened to the wind turbines, so I don't need to tell you what they sound like. But the wind turbine, the Vestas, the sound power levels, if I told you this was a 103, the GE is a 102, the Suzlon is a 108, they're all about the same in terms of what their sound characteristics are. And these are just normal household items to sort of put that stuff in perspective. So I'm here to say the sound power levels from this Vestas V82 1.65 megawatt turbine, they're certified and warranted to be 103, which naturally attenuates. And again, it's the same as the Notice Turbine that already has a special permit from this board. We checked it. It's compliant, and it meets the town and state standards. This is a picture that was taken, we set up a 10-meter MET Mast at the same time. And so from the sound study, which I included in the packet that I gave you, not that you probably haven't seen that before, but just to emphasize, like, there's one page that I took out of it and put on my bulletin board because it was the most meaningful to me. And again, if you look at the red line and the blue line, the blue line is background. This is the L90 that the microphones that were placed out in the woods in a cul-de-sac, wherever they were, to get measurements of what is the background sound in Falmouth is represented by the blue line. And it changes as the wind blows. It changes as night falls, as human activity, as animal activity wanes, ebbs and flows throughout the day and the seasons. So it's a moving target. And I'm sorry to say that the sound that we hear today, the world is a noisier place now than it was 100 years ago, five years ago, you know? And that's never going to change. And I remember when this was going on, I was in the middle of this sound study with HMMH and the town, and I was listening to NPR radio. And they happened to have a guy on there who was an acoustic expert talking about sounds, and he's been around the world measuring them, from places like in the middle of the Antarctic, to deserts, to some of the busiest cities that you could visit. And he was in the back of a taxi cab in Cairo, Egypt, where he measured background sound levels between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM were 90 decibels. And that's just how loud it is in that city. It's a hustling, bustling place. And Falmouth, I'm not trying to suggest that Falmouth is like Cairo, Egypt, but I'm just here to tell you that the sound is always going to be with us, and it's always going to be changing as different technology is put into place. And it's everything from cars and trains and planes to air conditioners and lawnmowers, whatever you have that makes noise is contributing to background sounds continuously, and it's a moving target always. There's something that says that the wires from the windmill should be placed underground. So we put them underground. This is a picture from the service road looking up to where wind one is, and of course, they're put underground. D says all windmills should require a use permit. Well, a use permit is simply an approved building permit. If it was your house, it would be a certificate of occupancy. But for the purposes of a structure, a utility like this, it's a certificate of completion that was issued when the final building inspection was done and it was signed off on, that it was built in accordance with the plans and specs. So the windmill shall be protected from unlawful access. And again, this is probably written at a time where lattice towers were popular for supporting a tower. There's actually some schematics in the IEC spec that you can see the old lattice towers because that's what they built back then to support these structures. And like water tanks, kids like to climb things like that, and sometimes they fall off. So you better protect it from unlawful access. And so it has a locked door, a fence around it. There's fence at the wastewater treatment plant. It's a secure place. It's not a place that the public should be anyway. And it's not that they're not welcome there. I'm sure Charlie and Pat up there would love to see visitors every once in a while. But you've got to check in with them and let them know what you're doing because there's a lot of things that could hurt you at this plant. Not just, you know, potentially a piece of ice falling from the windmill, but the grinder pumps and everything else that's mechanical and treats your sewage up there. So there's some series of pictures, again, about protecting the public from unlawful access to your wind turbines. And it was fenced, it's locked, it's secure. An operational history and safety, one of the things that was done is the wastewater treatment facility and Jerry have an operating manual for the plant in general. This is another widget that they operate at their plant. And they have emergency planning considerations. The police and the fire department, they were brought up there because heaven forbid, what should happen if lightning strikes and it catches on fire? Or there is a remote chance of a mechanical failure? The oil wasn't changed in it, and it got hot and it caught on fire. Has that ever happened before? Sure it has. Is it going to happen here? Probably not. So I would tell you, again, with this presentation, as someone who sits in front of ZBAs and planning boards and CONCOM, that this project complies with your zoning ordinance. And that the town has done plenty of due diligence when they built this, when they thought about it. There were a lot of people, a lot of stakeholders involved. Again, it's a project I'm proud, passionate of, and I would love for any of you that have questions to ask them of me.
So does anybody have questions from the board? Paul, do you want to start?
I have one, yeah. I just, I'm not sure if you're the right person to ask, but did, when, did the building commissioner reach out to anyone in town at all for an opinion as to whether or not he had the authority to issue this as a matter of right, formal or otherwise? Did he reach out to the planner, the town manager, town council, anything like that?
Yeah, so the town planner, I think that your memo says that he talked with Brian Curry about this in planning department. And not for nothing, but Aladio Gore, the first thing, like, I come from a world of consulting and engineering. I've been doing it for 25 years, and I've done building code compliance services in other states where, where if you wanted a permit, you submitted an application. And if there was something else that you needed to do, go get someone else's approval, they would stamp it and deny it as a matter of course. Aladio denied the permit here the first time through. And we had to go through the Department of Safety and Public Regulations for an appeal based on some obscure wind condition about this turbine, how it was designed, and make sure that we were in compliance with the building code that was in effect at the time. And so there was a long, another two or three-month gap where this project was delayed, but necessarily for safety reasons.
I see. Kim, I think Evan would like to speak to me. Through you, I'm not sure.
I just want to clarify the answer to that question. Yes, the town council is here, and I think you can affirm that the decision by the building commissioner was extraordinarily deliberate. He weighed on that decision for some time. He consulted with town council, he consulted with the town planner. And really, if you can go back in time, what was going on in the community was a significant amount of planning for public infrastructure. We were planning on what was the time, at the time was a $500 million wastewater treatment plan that would have included multiple wastewater treatment facilities as well as a freshwater treatment facility. Both of those are now under construction. Neither of them had a special permit associated with them. Neither of them had a special permit associated with them. And there was a lot of discussion about, well, why don't we just go to the zoning board of appeals? Let's, let's forget what we're doing everywhere else. This is an important community project. Let's, let's pursue a permit with the zoning board of appeals. Ultimately, the building commissioner evaluated the way the town has handled its special permits on public use, determined that this was a public use, and that the implementers of the project were simply awaiting the appropriate direction.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Paul?
No, not, not at the moment.
Okay.
Thanks.
And I'm sure we'll have different, obviously, presenters and engineers from the town, so...
Sure.
Do you have any questions?
No, more interested in the acoustics.
Okay. Ken?
So, I'm just trying to understand the role of the, in our bylaws, there's a section 243, there are two words, refers to structures exceeding 50 feet as permitted accessory uses in public use districts. And the accessory nature of this, because I think it, based on your description, is generating 3.5 million kilowatts per year. What is the use requirement for the plant itself?
So, there was a study done, I think, at the time, the plant was using between 200,000 and 300,000 kilowatt-hours of electricity per year.
So, this is generating quite a bit more power than...
Sure. It is.
What would a 660 kilowatt annually?
Not as much. So, a lot of people say, you know, look, it takes, you'd have to study that. I can tell you that most 660 kilowatt turbines in this state don't produce much more than single-digit capacity factors. And so, it's hard to say exactly what it, you'd have to run an analysis. You'd have to do that feasibility study, targeting on wind speeds, what is your hub height? And, and you could figure it out, but we didn't figure that out. There was not a need for that.
You have a second? CJ?
Can I address the issue I have for you now?
Okay, per usual, I will follow up with many questions. You mentioned during your presentation that there was a preliminary FAA determination, and you also said that there were some issues later that need to be addressed and that you addressed those. What were those issues?
So, there was an issue that surfaced during Wind 2, that, that the FAA, in its wisdom, said, geez, we didn't check everything that we were supposed to the first time. And so, they, after they had run through their analysis, they did an obstruction analysis in accordance with the FAA requirements that they had at the time, and, and they determined that they needed what they called a step-down fix. Would you like to address that?
Thank you for the question. And it was during the construction of Wind 1, not Wind 2.
Okay.
And it bears significantly, I believe, because it relates to the Notice Turbine that was permitted by this board. The town of Falmouth, after engaging in a contract with DNC Construction in September of 2009, and after having received three separate determinations of no hazard by the FAA, on December 23rd, received a notice that the FAA found a potential hazard with a Coast Guard approach. And it was the Coast Guard itself that, that did not, wasn't responsive, apparently, in the initial study by the FAA. So, the project was significantly delayed. The town worked in a very public process for, for a long time with the FAA, Congressman Dole Hunt, Senator Murray, our local representatives, and, and many folks. And ultimately, what, what occurred was a change in the flight approach to the Coast Guard flight runway. So, there was a new step-down created within three months. Every pilot that flies into the airbase now has a new plate in their flight manual. I, I didn't know anything about any of this before that, but it was a very public process, required federal and state assistance, it required working with multiple federal agencies over a very significant period of time. And had the town not engaged in that process, the Notice Turbine would not have been able to be constructed because it is in the same flight path.
Okay. But it, so it's, just as a follow-up question, so it's something that moving forward, if we were to grant the special permit, would not be an issue because...
Correct.
You, you mentioned ice throw a couple of times, and I have a general understanding of what that would be. But for something of this size, I guess, how far would the ice throw be? What conditions does that occur under? So, if you could just perform a little bit more.
So, again, I'm not an expert on, on ice accretion on turbine blades, but during my visit to upstate New York, where they have a lot more snowfall, you know, I asked them to explain to me what happens. And so, again, ice can form naturally under a couple of different scenarios. Most ice is shed and falls right near the base of the turbine. But if there's a piece of ice that's attached to the blade and it starts to spin around and it's warming up, then it can be thrown. And, and I'm sure that there are reports and incidences of ice being thrown an appreciable distance. And by that, I mean 1,000 feet, I'm sure. But the, the likelihood of that diminishes very quickly as you move away from the base of the turbine. Most of it is accumulated at the base where you see evidence of it. If there's a freshly fallen snow and you show up and the turbine's not moving and you see holes in the, in the snow, they, they must have come from the turbine blades above. That's sort of the, the analogy and the information, you know, that I know. And it varies. I've seen scatter plots in, in that same study that I referenced, the reference is in there, and I'm sure that they have, you know, how big, how, how far in other metrics to report.
This might be kind of a naive question, but, and it's just because I'm not as experienced as I'm sure everybody in the room is and, and familiar with these turbines. Ken, is it something that the turbine is shut off for a period of time during certain conditions and then turned back on later to avoid ice throw? Is that ever something that can happen?
It can. There's a lot. I think there was, we had included it in the mitigations analysis, which I included a copy of, which, again, I, I'm sure that you've seen, but there were things about ice throw and, and what can be done. You know, for example, technicians are taught to make observations of turbines before they approach them. And by that, I mean, as you're driving up to it, about to perform some routine maintenance on it, you're going to look up and see if there's ice and snow hanging from it. And if there is, you're not to approach it, you know? That it will likely fall off in a very short amount of time. It doesn't stay there for, forever. And it's usually just the sun coming out, it warms it up a little bit, and it slides off if it has accumulated. And, and I know that we had presented some things, there, there are low-tech methods of doing this. You've seen these in parking lots where large parking lots have these little indicators that if, if the temperature and the humidity are right for ice to form, that they turn from white to blue, and that should alert you as a cue that there is a potential slip hazard because you could slip on ice that forms on the street or in your parking lot. And, and so, it ranges. There's, there are also sensors in the turbine. There are accelerometers that operate at two different planes that if there was an imbalance in those blades, that would sense and cause a shutdown. So, there, there are things that are, that are inherent, there are common sense, and there are things that are built into the turbine that would help that. Does the imbalance get detected right away? You know, probably not, but within a few minutes of, of operation, it would likely sense that. And, and that accelerometer data is something that was used when investigating the sound issues. They wanted to know what was going on. And I'm sure you've heard reports of, there's a, there's a vibration dampening system at the top of the turbine. And that system consists of basically a steel shell that's hanging inside of the steel shell that is the, the turbine itself, and it's immersed in a, in an oil bath so that when it goes this way, something is, is, is causing inertia to stop it from going so that the oscillations don't get out of control. And so, they look at that data and they could tell that something was not right. And it just happened to be that the way that this pendulum was hung, one of the struts bent, and they determined that, that was what was known as the boot in the dryer. There's making a clanking sound up there. Well, that's what it was. That was no longer centered the way it should be. So, they replaced it, and that sound went away. And, but, and that vibration, you know, issue was detected by those accelerometers.
You referenced a couple of times the state standards. I was just wondering if those have been provided to us?
10 decibels above background.
For noise?
For noise.
Are there any other standards applicable to? So, that's it? Just the noise?
Then, there's no requirement for you to do a sound study, incidentally, before you do this. You know, there's that old saying, if a tree falls in the forest and no one is around to hear it, did it really make a sound? And the answer is, no, it didn't. Not unless someone was there with a microphone, like Chris's subconsultants, to capture it on sound. You know, if you don't hear it, you didn't hear it.
On, on your slide, also, you reference legal consultants, and, and I'm not interested in attorney-client communications or anything of that nature, but I was just wondering what their role was in this whole process.
I don't know. I didn't have any communication with them.
Okay.
Bernstein, Kushner, and Karamo helped us draft the Schedule Z and negotiate the interconnection agreement with NSTAR. I believe we were one of the first in the state to do that.
So, there was nothing to do, they had no oversight into permitting of the project?
No.
You provided us with this diagram that says, well, first, I guess I'll back up. So, one of the sheets says, "Sound levels from windmill below 40 decibels at property line are defined as acceptable." And then, you flip forward to this, "How loud is a wind turbine?" diagram. And I kind of marked where the property line is, and it looks like it would be greater than 40 decibels at the property line. So, I just wanted you to, to touch on that.
It's not greater than 40. So, that's just, that diagram has nothing to do with Falmouth. It's just, it's just in general.
What is it at the property line?
Low, low, upper 30 decibels. You know, 38. It's in the sound report that's included there.
Okay.
And, and the line from your bylaw says that "There shall be a rebuttable presumption that noise from the windmill in excess of 40 dBA as measured at the property line shall not be excessive." And, and again, I'm here to tell you that 40 decibels, that was written in 1981. 40 decibels is arbitrary. You have more than 40 decibels on a windy day without any turbines. It's that the increase of no more than 10 decibels above background is what the state deems excessive or acceptable.
You touched on unauthorized access, and I know you, you provided images showing the fence, the lock there. Have there been any instances where people have entered into the site unauthorized?
Not, not to my knowledge, but Jerry, as the superintendent of the wastewater plant, would know better than I would.
Jerry Paton is wastewater superintendent. There's been no unauthorized entrance after the gates are closed. When the gates are open, people come in, drive around, do bird watching. And we've had occasions where we had to stop people, and they've told us it's a public facility. I could not enforce no trespassing while the facility was open, so I just backed off. We just want them to register. We don't want them to drive into one of the open pits or, or the other things. But there's, I would say, there's been no unauthorized entrance. People come in, most of them sign in. Occasionally, they don't sign in. I wouldn't say that's an unauthorized. I think that's just a ill-informed person that's driving up and wants to take pictures. Early on, we had a lot of people coming in wanting to go up to the wind turbine, take pictures and things like that, and we stopped that pretty quickly.
Okay, well, let me, I guess, refine my question. So, there's obviously the wastewater treatment plant has a gate outside. I, I said the sign. There's also a gate around the wind turbine basis, is that correct?
Yes.
And has there been any entry into that gate?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
And the other thing is, we put up a, that rope with a sign on it. That's added security that people don't even approach it, and it's more important probably during the winter time so that they don't come even close to, I think, I'll have to go back, but I think that was a distance that is in our wind policy for absolutely safety of wind throw. So, it's a double check and a double check.
Okay. Thank you. And just one last question. You, oh, actually, I have a couple more questions. You, you referenced lightning strikes and the possibility of catching fire. You said it was rare, I believe. Do these generally attract lightning strikes because it's tall, it's metal, it's...
Sure.
Are they frequent? Is that something frequent?
It, it happens. Like, I'm aware of an instance in, in CCI Gardner that was struck by lightning. And they are protected, they're grounded. But it would take a lightning expert to tell you, like, how many volts are in there and how much grounding is acceptable. And most electricians that specialize in this will tell you, there's no amount of grounding that will 100% protect any structure. It, it's rare to happen, but it does happen. Usually, it, it will likely fry some electronics that need to be replaced, as what happened up in Gardner. There are two identical projects. One was mentioned by Attorney Tilliston at Mount Wachusett Community College. Again, an identical pair of turbines up there at the community college. There's another identical pair at a prison facility operating in the town of Gardner.
Okay. And then, you just referenced, I think, in response to Paul's question, that Aladio originally denied the permit for the first time when it was applied for. So, what, what did he require you to do?
He required us to go before the Board of Safety at the state level in Taunton and, and get a, a sufficiency review on the structural design of the turbine.
And have we been provided with that sufficiency review or anything from that?
There is a, there is a determination that was made. It's, it's part of the public records in the Department of Public Safety.
Okay.
I can tell you that Dan Webb's turbine went through the exact same review. And I, I've seen copies of both of them. I, I take it back, I've seen a copy of his. For some reason, I didn't see Falmouth posted, but I know it happened because I was there.
Okay. Those were all my questions. Does anybody else have any follow-up questions?
No.
Except right now. Karen Spence.
Attorney, no, I just, some of the things that you've asked for, they will be submitted, correct?
If the board wants it, we can submit it.
I think the board wants it.
Yeah, yeah, generally, any report, or if, if I'm asking for it, I would like to see it, certainly.
Okay.
Attorney Bobrovsky?
I just had a couple of questions. Mr. Foreman alluded to the fact that the bylaw requires it to be accessory, and I wonder if you can illuminate whether or not it's customary, because that's part of the definition of accessory, to have a turbine associated with a wastewater treatment plant. Are there other municipal facilities either around Massachusetts or around the country in which this is a practice that they've undertaken?
There, there are, I believe, other turbines at wastewater treatment facilities. I mean, I'm not, I'm not privy to all of them. And, and clearly, it's an accessory use because it's behind the meter, that it creates more electricity than it uses. It's just an artifact of, of net metering in Massachusetts that, that enables you to wield the power virtually to other town facilities. But the answer is yes, they do exist. I'm aware of some, but I don't have the citations.
I think it'd be useful for the board in deliberating to get a list to see how common or uncommon it is.
Sure. I mean, I can tell you at the time, it wasn't common because when we went to build this, there were only five megawatts in the state of Massachusetts, period. So, now, there's a little over 100. But I don't keep track of all other projects, generally speaking.
And my other question, I guess, is not directed so much at you as, as to the town's representatives. The bylaw says that the criteria that you've addressed this evening with regard to 24166 are, those are specifically addressed to windmills. But the preamble to that says that, in addition to the criteria listed in 24216, the board shall consider the following. "In addition to the criteria listed in 24216, the board shall consider the following." And when I, those are the generic special permit criteria. And I just wonder if you're the person to address that or whether you're planning to address it through somebody else. Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I wanted to ask a little more about ice throw. Because I'm looking at this diagram in your presentation. And I wonder if you could pull this over to that. Then you can get it back.
Yeah, Jerry, if you, I don't know if I can. I'll let him pull it through. And again, this is pulled from, the references in here from Head of Finland, a study in 1998.
So that's the first question, is how relevant is it to the installation we have?
This is just a figure to give you a representative idea of what the what the likelihood of ice throw or a risk of being struck by ice in terms of what the distance is, so you see in meters?
Right. We have, so we have three things, three lines. One says light, the other says moderate, the other says heavy. What's the difference?
Well, 24 days per year of ice or snow.
What conditions are different? Oh, 24 days a year of snow. So what do we have in FALMS?
I don't know. It varies every year. Could be nothing, could be a lot. But it's not very much, you're tempered by the ocean. I would tell you that you're not, you're not in an area like, you know, the Arctic or Alaska where they have a lot of ice and snow.
Certainly. We understand that. I guess my concern, the other concern is that because one of these, I think it's wind two, is that it's pretty close to Route 28. That's always been my concern, is that if there's ice throw that does occur and someone's driving on that road, could it reach the road and could it cause an accident?
Could it? It could, sure. I mean, I'm not going to say that it couldn't.
Is there a way we can get a better assessment?
No, there isn't, not to my knowledge. You know, I would ask you what the board considered when it looked at Webb's ice throw issue, where they have a public road that's much closer than Route 28 is to FALMS, Wind Two. And what did you require then? I would virtually look back, I haven't seen that decision. And I wasn't part of that hearing, but clearly, it was discussed. And the conditions are more ripe, I suppose, you know, for a potential ice throw. So I don't have an answer, and it varies.
There's an interaction. I guess what's concerning me is the amount of traffic, the speed of traffic, along with the probability of ice throw. Different set of conditions.
Right. So what's your question?
Just whether there's any more permanent data that you have on the probability of ice throw aboard this particular installation.
Yeah, there isn't. So, and again, with respect to Vestas, again, Senni made a comment that, I got an email from Vestas with a quote, "serious warning" about sound pressure problems with this turbine. And I think that that was a mischaracterization of the email that I got from Vestas. It's not that it's a serious problem or a serious warning. You know, Vestas was simply saying, "Look, you guys know what you're buying is a wind turbine. It's tall, it makes energy, it moves, and it is characteristically a wind turbine. You understand that, right? Because I had a lot of problems and a lot of complaints, and I sent a lot of people down to check it out the first time. Now you want to sell me another one. Tell me you understand what the characteristics of this is." And so that's the characterization that I would give you, not the one that Chris gave earlier tonight. You have a more likelihood of being hit by ice sliding off your roof at your house than you do from this wind turbine.
Excuse me, there aren't towels to speak.
So, I hope that answered your question.
Are you all set, Ken?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think the board's finished with their questions. It's 9:26, we stop at 9:30. So I think it makes sense, this is a good stopping point. Four minutes.
The board has to address the request from the town manager.
As well, yes. We do have open meeting items to address. You'll certainly have an opportunity to speak at the next hearing if you'd like to speak, but I will cut you off at 9:30.
Mr. Wee said, "There's no need to do an acoustical analysis prior to construction." But Stephen Wee issued a proposal to the town in March of 2008 to do an acoustical study of Wind One prior to construction. I don't know who decided not to do that, but there was a proposal, a written proposal to the town by Stephen Wee to do such a study. If there's a zoning bylaw that says maximum forty decibels at the property line that you know you have to comply with, how will you know you will comply with it if you don't do a sound study? The standard of care at the time, even in 2008, was to do a study that started with measuring ambient sound levels and then projecting turbine sound pressure levels to see if you would meet that 10-decibel standard. Yep, the DEP limit, that was the standard at the time. In fact, when Wind One was going to be sold to Fairhaven, the CEC paid for a pre-construction acoustical sound study for the same turbine when it was going to be in Fairhaven. I don't think it's fair to say you don't need to do a pre-construction acoustical study. In fact, I think by 2008, Weston and Sampson had commissioned a number of these pre-construction acoustical studies for wind turbines. The 103.2 sound power level of the Vestas V82. In 2010, when Vestas was expressing concerns, they weren't saying, "Hey, you know you're buying a turbine." They said, "This shows the turbine normally operates at 103.2 decibels, but the manufacturer has also stated that it may produce up to 110 decibels under certain circumstances." The chart you saw stopped at eight meters a second. It was a chart that showed sound power level, but the wind does blow more than eight meters a second. It can blow nine, and 10, and 11, and 12. And the thing about Wind One and Wind Two is it's a stall-regulated turbine, not very popular these days. That's a mechanism to shed unwanted wind. And a stall-regulated turbine has been found by the state to be louder. And actually, the way it's different is that when a pitch-regulated turbine reaches maximum power, it stops getting louder. But a stall-regulated turbine doesn't. So that chart, the chart you saw, doesn't show the full picture. The standard mentioned, IEC, has an Annex A. It says, "Not only do you look at broadband sound to see if you'll be above ambient by 10 decibels, you need to look at the unique character of wind turbine sound, infrasound, amplitude modulation," which Mr. Wee called a nifty way to describe wind turbine sound, "and the variable character of wind turbine sound." Mr. Wee not only filled out an application for a special permit on May 8, 2008, he submitted it to the town engineer with plans marked for permitting only. The scope of work that Weston and Sampson signed with the town included local permitting, specifically mentioning the planning board. I would like to know, does Mr. Wee think it would have been prudent back in 2008 to apply for a special permit? He filled out the application, he created plans that were for permitting purposes, but no application was ever filed. Thank you.
Thank you. But I'll just ask Sarie to address that last question because I don't know if you'll be here at future hearings. And that's limited to, would it have been prudent to apply in 2008?
So, again, in our course of business, if we thought that there was a requirement for it, we filled out the application and gave it to the town engineer. And the town engineer came back with a determination that it wasn't required because of municipal use.
Thank you. All right, so we'll need a motion to continue. And the date of that, I don't know if that has been discussed already or is that as well the 19th? Or? The 19th, if everybody's here, it may make sense.
Yeah, I'll move that we continue to November 19th here in Town Hall.
Second.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM is what that sounds, good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous.
What's the date on that, please?
November 19th.
Okay, so we have open meeting items. If you could please exit the hearing room quietly, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Keep going because you're still the goodest.
Yeah. All right, has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from October 8?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Somebody want to make a motion about this?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, so that was Paul and Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. The next item of discussion is the cease and desist order for the maintenance of the Wind Turbine One. Has everybody had an opportunity to review Town Council's letter regarding that?
Yes.
May I make a suggestion on this?
Yes.
I just conferred with Attorney Senni, and he's represented to me that he has no objection to the protocol suggested in the memorandum from the town manager dated October 6. So I would suggest that we, I can do this on your behalf, compose a letter to Mr. Gore saying that we do not consider this to be a violation of the cease and desist order. We can certainly, if the board reaches the same conclusion with Mr. Watt's appeal of Wind One for enforcement, we can put this in that decision. But to temporarily hold us over, I think that might be the best course of action if the board thinks that this protocol is acceptable.
Anybody have any issues with the protocol?
No, I think they've definitely got to do it.
So, do we need a motion to ask you to write the letter?
Sure, that's good.
Direct you to write the letter?
Yep.
Okay, does anybody have a motion to do that?
Laio Gore. Laio Gore.
Laio Gore, assending to the protocol that was in the letter.
October 6?
October 6.
Okay, so that's Ken's motion.
Second.
Okay, so that was Ken and Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
He'll CC everybody on that.
One last thing before I go to listen to the Patriots game in the car. Can we project out from November 19 so that people can plan around the very few remaining dates we'll have before Christmas, undoubtedly?
I wonder if we could do that by email?
No, you have to, oh, before the next hearing? It's just tough to get all the attorneys
I understand.
and the board, because I tried it before.
My work calendar, which I don't have.
Yeah, because this is a continuation of the next one, so it doesn't have to be publicly defined tonight.
Well, we're set for the 19th, but I just, if it's inconvenient because we don't have the information.
Can you throw out a couple dates?
I think the December, if looking at the schedule, it would be necessary. It looked like you had fairly significant hearings until December, other than the 19th, until December 10th, and it looked like that was the really the first date.
I got to tell you, I prefer, this turbine is taking up so much time that applications are kind of few and, you know, I'm having to stage them. Right now, I'm 64 days out. And it's 65 days, as you well know.
Yeah.
I'd prefer, if you're going to do a December hearing, that you do it the 17th, only because I've already got hearings straight for a 12-3.
Right, I saw that.
And then that leaves up, if I get an application next week for 12-10, I got to get waivers.
I don't.
So. By the way, there's a lot of hearings to wait in the round.
Guess the board is hard working.
It's more likely to be better than the 17th.
I mean, I can ask for waivers, you can do December 10th. But people don't have to sign those waivers, you realize that?
December 10th versus the 17th of?
December.
If it matters to you, I can't be here on the 10th, but I can be here on the 17th.
Okay.
You can't do the 17th.
Could we look at a different day of the week? Is that a possibility? I know that that creates scheduling issues.
If you give me some dates, it does. I mean, we may have to go down and use the Civil Defense Room, but there's some Mondays that the Board of Selectmen don't meet. And I believe Heather and Julian are here, maybe they could answer that question to where you could do it on a Monday night. I don't have planning boards. I can look those up. They don't have them every week.
So it may make sense to coordinate this in the coming days, once people have, if you have.
Maybe the attorneys could send me your availability, especially that period of time between the 30th of November, which is a Monday, and the 9th of December, which is a Wednesday.
And it's really, it's the expert witnesses that try to get them scheduled at a time that you're all available and frankly, willing to come in. I know you've got an awful lot of hearings.
Ken, are you going on vacation? I mean, does anybody have Christmas vacation dates that we need to know about?
Yeah, I'll be going from 23rd through
Oh, okay. But we don't want it that week anyway. I don't want it that week.
I believe Monday, December 14th is an open meeting. It's like an open meeting in this room. That would be.
December 14th?
It's okay.
How about you?
I'll be in Portland, Oregon, visiting my daughter. It's the place where young people go to retire. Lucky her.
So we'll coordinate a date then in the coming days via email. But we are on for December 19th.
Right, so.
November.
Oh, excuse me, November 19th, sorry.
And the board's amenable to Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday?
Yes.
Schedule those. And 5 o'clock, right?
Yes.
Five.
Anytime.
They're kidding.
Okay, so that is all for the
We'll try and get that done soon, right?
Board
Continuing on.
Board review and approve revised procedures and mission statement.
Do you have yours? Because I apologize, I'm trying to get all this other information together.
I do have mine.
Didn't bring copies.
But I haven't reviewed it, to be honest, sir.
We can put it on till next week.
Okay, that would be good, just because there was a lot in advance of this hearing. Town meeting discussion. Sarie, I know forwarded my comments to the board today. I think we could put it off until next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, you haven't reviewed it.
Because all of that went out today in the midst of all of this.
And I want to make some changes.
Want to tweak it?
Maybe. Less legalese. So I will provide an updated copy to that. I know bylaw review update, we're probably in the same position that we've been in.
I'm trying to get a date with the planning board for joint meetings and discussion before the close of the warrants, but they're pretty busy, and he said it's not looking
Oh, before, oh, for, okay. Well, we can always appear at that town meeting and comment with our comments as well.
We'd love to do them before.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. I would appreciate that. Correspondence or board updates, anything, Sarie?
I don't have anything. Ed went to a seminar on 40Bs. Did he bring that up?
No, we brought it up on a Saturday.
Oh, that's right.
So we talked about that?
That's it.
And future agenda items, we have a lot to do for hearings. So I think we're full on that.
Yeah, if you guys, if you could please get back to me on any dates that I send you, it would really help the whole situation.
Okay.
Ken? Ken?